My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and this is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no regime of justice.
Member Steele?
Here.
Member Langwell?
Here.
Member Millsboro?
Here.
Member Holbrook?
Here.
Member Deena's Abson? Member Lake?
Here. Next, we have a presentation and building program highlights, Max Larson Elementary. Where does she go?
Thank you, everyone, for coming to Max Larson Elementary for our alphabet fashion show with the flair. There is an educational component to this, and the kids have had a wonderful time learning their letters and sums. They mastered most of these previously this year, probably by the end of November. Probably thought this would be a great way to showcase what they have learned. So, without further ado, this booth, I think I'll begin. All right, here we go.
My name is Max. I'm with a D, and I'm...my favorite food, so Christine is dog.
My name is Jessie, and my letter is F.
Justice.
My name is G.
All right, this is Rosalie. She is helpful age, and she likes hearts and hugs.
We have another letter, Steve, this is Olivia.
Hi, and my name is class, and I like jelly beans and jam.
This is Rosario. This is Rosemary. She's the letter L, and she likes Liliana and Lions.
This is Tata. He is the letter F.
I'm sorry. Tata is F, yes. He begins with F, but his letter is M. He likes motorcycles, macaroni and cheese, and mangoes. Now we have Miss Dean, and Riley loves the letter N. Dean likes noodles, Nutella, nail polish, and mangoes. Oh, I'm sorry, nail polish, and Riley likes necklaces. This is Ben. Ben is the letter O. He likes Oreos, Acetis, and Actagans.
All right, next up on the red carpet, we have Sultan here. He is rocking the letter P. Would you like to do a walk, Sultan? Look at him go, there he goes. All right, next up. No, okay. We have Jude here, and he is wearing the letter Q today. Loves question marks, quarters. We have a queen and a quilt. Would you like to head on down, Jude? Okay, do your walk, buddy. Good job.
My name is Jessie. My letter is R.
All right, next up on the red carpet, we have Brianna here, and she is modeling the letter T today. Would you like to do your walk, Brianna? Looking good, couple letters, but focusing on that letter T today. Do you want to talk to us? All right, it looks like we have Jace ready for the red carpet. Jace is wearing the letter U. Umbrella, unicorn, upside down. Would you like to do your walk, buddy? Yeah? Feeling good? Okay? Good job, buddy. This is Jane. Her favorite words are Valentine and van. Here she goes on the red carpet. Go, Jane. All right, because the letter W is so wonderful, we have two Ws that's going to walk. This is Carly and Carter. Go ahead and start walking down. Carter's favorite W word is whale, and Carly loves watermelon and winning. Straight pose, too. Yeah. Next, we have Noah. Noah is the letter X. You can start walking down. His favorite X words are X-ray, and six has X at the end.
I'm worried about letter Y.
All right, would you like to do your walk? Okay, Nobalita's taking the red carpet with her letter Y today. That would be quick one. All right, here we come. And last but not least, would you like to try? You do? Okay, tell them your name. Tell them what letter you are. Letter Z? Good job, Adley. Okay, Adley, let's finish up the alphabet, take that red carpet. Great job. You can wave to your mom. All right, here we go. Good job. And that is not that, is it? Thank you so much for allowing your children to participate with us this evening. Parents, if you would like to leave, you are free to go rather than stay for the entirety of the morning.
For anybody in the wish list to address the board? Next, we have the approval of the minutes from January 27. Is there a motion to approve? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Next, agenda additions and deletions.
We have two amendments to the agenda tonight, both additions. The first, under Roman number four, consent agenda, number two, personnel recommendations, we will add that the board accept the resignation of teacher Keith Johnson. And under action items, which is XII number four, where the recommendation to approve the athletic...I'm sorry, not number four, number three, recommendation to approve JV and varsity baseball uniforms to include bags and pullovers in the action item.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have one communication, a letter written to each of the board members. Do you want to address it?
Yeah, we received letters last week in support of an individual in the community who has been giving individual swim lessons at the Aquatic Center. And since we have hired on a third party to run the operations and do all the hiring for the Aquatic Center, this person was offered a job to work through Hampton Aquatics and turned that down. This letter was not written by that person, but was written by a supporter of that person, and I did send a response through the mail explaining our position.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have personnel recommendations. We're up again.
All right. Be resolved that relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education accept with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for 32 years, the retirement resignation of Leg Middle School teacher Andrew Rosso, effective July 1, 2025. The Board of Education accept the resignation of Leg Middle School teacher Keith Johnson. Relative to support staff recommendations, the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Heather Pinson from the bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools, effective February 7, 2025. The Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Bonnie Hunneman from the bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools, effective February 21, 2025. The Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Becky Cole, part-time caregiver at Kids Club, effective immediately upon board approval. And relative to extra duty staff recommendations, the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Fred Yaki from the extra duty coaching position for Leg Middle School Tennis. And the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Joe Clawson from the extra duty coaching position for freshman girls volleyball, effective immediately upon board approval.
Thank you very much. Next, approval of January accounts for payment and financial statements.
Be resolved on the following accounts for January, the approved payment as follows: General Funds Account in the amount of $2,781,196.30. Special Revenue Accounts in the amount of $352,622.51. And be resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you, Keith. Next, we have the acceptance and approval of gifts via member Millsboro.
Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gift offered by the donors in this announcement. Recognition and approval for acceptance of the gift is being sought. This is from American Agent Post 52, in a monetary amount of $500 for the recently formed boys at the volleyball club. The gracious and continued support of the donor listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the board accept the gift noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be resolved that the Board of Education gratefully accepts the gift as presented, and be further resolved that a letter of appreciation on behalf of the board be sent to the donor in the given book for their worthwhile and generous gift.
Thank you, Jim. That is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have reports, presentations, recommendations, building reports. Do the principals wish to add any information to what was on the website? No? Curriculum report is in there. You wish to add anything, Mr. Dancer?
Not at this time.
What color are your shoes tonight?
They're khaki.
Board committee reports. I didn't make any money, did anybody?
We did. We had a district improvement advisory committee.
We're paying for that?
Yes, we are. It's good stuff. It's a good meeting. Would someone from the committee like to talk about it, or would you like me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. In today's packet, you received the minutes from that meeting. We met on February 19. Members present were Claire Dean, Kate Frederick, Kristen Lyons Welch. Also present was myself. We discussed the purpose and vision of the committee, since this is a new group of people on this committee, and we talked about how it ties in with the school and district improvement plans, the vision of focus on culture and climate of the district, which would also include curriculum, and reviewing the strategic plan, being the committee that looks at the strategic plan. Next, we talked about the strategic plan. I provided them with copies of the district's strategic plan, mentioned areas of focused improvement, including where we've gotten to improving mental health services, ML support, which is our multi-language learners, professional development and focus on curriculum. Most and all of this has links to our high reliability schools process that the school adopted this year. We talked about curriculum. In your packet, there are some new high school courses that are recommended, and the committee reviewed and discussed those new course recommendations, and supported certain electives to be brought to the board for approval tonight. And we talked a little bit about the elementary literacy discussion that the elementary principals and I have been having this year, to update them on curriculum review, collaboration with elementary principals, and upcoming plans for incorporation of more phonics-based instruction in the everyday instruction of our students, so more tier-one teaching of phonics. Other items brought by the committee was discussion on how this committee can be included in the upcoming bond process, and ideas for maximizing communication to the community, such as presentation to township board meetings, coffee with the superintendent at areas throughout the district, et cetera, and discussion of elementary school fundraisers in need for review of what the district should be supporting for fundraising opportunities. And we adjourned at 9:40 a.m.
Is that going to be your superintendent's report, too? Or you've got another superintendent's report?
That's not my guy. Is that next?
You're getting to talk a lot.
I appreciate that. My superintendent's report is short this one, but I'm very proud of the efforts by Leslie Hagelgens and Becky Heaton, who are working and have worked with Western Michigan University on a program that will offer incentives for our teachers to receive higher education in English as a second language instruction by either obtaining a master's degree, endorsements, or getting an EDSL expedited route certification. Western Michigan University is offering funding to offset some of the costs for our teachers, and we have grants that are through us that are covering it, so this training will be at no cost to the teachers. So, for this first cohort with 10 guaranteed spots for our teachers, we had 28 who have expressed an interest, so they are starting a system of deciding who the first 10 will be. Very proud that Mr. Dancer applied for a second round of grant monies for fostering safe, healthy, and drug-free environments, implementing safety and violence prevention programs, anti-gullying programs, et cetera. And Coldwater Community Schools was awarded $117,000 for that, which is very good for us, and we'll be working with the principals on how to best implement programs in their buildings to improve those services. At the Aquatic Center, I'm very excited about this. The Sheriff's Department reached out about their dive team using the Aquatic Center during closed times for scuba training, and we had a great meeting with Audrina Hampton and the Sheriff's Department, and I believe their first day of training was just yesterday. So, really good to have that collaboration as well. And last but not least, we need bus drivers. If you know of anybody that wants to drive a bus, if you know of anybody that would like to work with kids and drive a bus, Dr. Lanford, I'm looking at you. It's early in the morning. That's not just a need for Coldwater schools, it's a need everywhere, but especially in the spring when we have a lot of field trips and sporting events, it really gets tight. So, we're trying to find ways around things, but if you know anybody, get the word out because we could use them, and we train them. So, that's all I have.
You have to have a commercial license, right?
Yeah.
Looking very good. Supple.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, Adam? No. Next, we have the action items. Request to approve the 2025-2026 curriculum proposals for Coldwater High School. Coldwater High School, administration recently submitted the request for board approval of eight new curriculum proposals for the 2025-2026 year. The courses include storylines and timelines. Number two, leadership. Number three, art essentials. Number four, mass media. Number five, lifeguard. Number six, AP seminar. Number seven, officiating. Number eight, swimming. Superintendent Flynn met with members of the District Improvement Advisory Committee on February 19 to review the details of each of these new proposed courses. CHS administration, along with the support of the Superintendent Flynn and District Improvement Advisory Committee, are requesting approval of the new curriculum proposals for Coldwater High School for the 2025-2026 school year. The full proposals for each course are submitted with this report to the board perusal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approve the adoption of the 2025-2026 curriculum proposals to Coldwater High School as presented. There are motions.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Lyons Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Millsboro?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Deena's Abson? Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passed. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the purchase of JV and varsity baseball uniforms, which are amended. Coldwater High School JV and varsity baseball teams are in need of new white uniforms. The district received three quotes for the new uniforms, pullovers and bags, with the most cost-effective quote coming from the Team Choice, which is included with this board report for board perusal. The administration is requesting approval of the quote from Team Choice for new uniforms, pullovers, and bags for the JV and varsity boys' baseball teams in a total amount of $9,900 to be paid out of the district's general fund. Be resolved, the Board of Education approve the purchase of new uniforms, pullovers, and bags from Team Choice for JV and varsity baseball teams in an amount of $9,900 to be paid from the district's general fund as amended. There are any motions? Any discussion?
I have a question, just how often do we get uniforms for each team? Is this...like, when was the last time we got a uniform?
Five years? No.
So, when I asked, I think Randy told me it was six years ago on the uniforms, and then the pullovers were eight.
One of the things we've been discussing with our athletic director and our department is getting a rotation schedule put together, so we're all on the same page for questions like that.
Is that true of all the sports? January 6, 7, 8 years?
It kind of depends on the sport and the usage, like, you know, when you're sliding, dancing, like, sort of, really, that kind of stuff.
Todd?
Football uniforms is going to be a lot more...is going to go through a lot more wear and tear than what a basketball uniform will and all that, so Sean and I have been trying to set up a time so that we can sit and talk to determine, okay, what is it? Because usually it went on a four-year rotation, and so what we want to do is sit down and take a look, because four years for a tennis uniform is different than four years for a baseball or softball uniform. So, we're going to sit down and figure out, okay, what exactly...what exactly is...because we all know fair isn't equal.
Do you typically change the uniform from the previous iteration? I mean, like, if you have a player that has a uniform and he never plays, the uniform is not going to get dirty, not going to get used, and going to last longer. So, if we had just replaced the ones that were damaged, would that...
In some instances, yes.
Or do you change the whole uniform?
In some instances, yes, but you also have to look, too, at style, because what looked good in the '70s doesn't necessarily look good now.
Probably the companies that make them make sure that you got to buy new ones, too. Do they just change a little?
Absolutely.
Maybe here and there. Oh, that one's discontinued now.
And do we also look at when varsity gets new uniforms, moving the old uniforms down to a lower level for their use?
We do. The constraint that I come to with that is when you're looking at, well, I'll just pick basketball against the 20th season. You know, we fit for what a 17, 18-year-old boy slash man would wear, and then we put them on a 13, 14-year-old boy, sometimes they don't mix.
Understood.
And at the same time, too, by the time that that, you know, if it's a four-year cycle or five years, by the time it gets to the freshmen, it's been 10, 12 years, and depending upon, you know, not everybody's water is the same. Some people have really hard water, so the white uniforms aren't necessarily white, they're kind of a... They're kind of a off-white, khaki color, just like Gary's shoes.
Your poor shoes are getting a lot of attention.
I'm not here on the red carpet.
I'll pass, I got glitter all over myself already.
What condition are the red uniforms in?
What's that?
What condition are the red uniforms in?
For what sport?
Baseball.
Because this is just, this is just for the white uniforms?
Yeah, he bought the red ones, see my son, I think he got those three years ago. So he got the red ones three years ago. So the red ones are still his.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next we have the recommendation to approve the athletic overnight stays for the bowling, gymnastics, swim, and dive teams for the regional and state finals. Athletic Director Todd Farmer is requesting formal board approval for overnight stays for the bowling, gymnastics, boys' swim and dive teams for each team's qualifiers to participate in their respective regional and state finals. Bowling is going to Waterford and Auburn Hills. Regional gymnastics is going to Grand Rapids and staying at the Hilton. State finals are at Grand Rapids, staying at the Fairfield. Boys' swim and dive will be going to Eastern Michigan University, staying at the Hampton Inn. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the athletic overnight stays for the bowling, gymnastics, and boys' swim and dive teams to participate in their respective regional and state finals as presented, is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion?
I had one more question. Sorry Todd, like, how do you pick the hotels? Because there's literally like one from every brand in here, like, if you guys focused on one, you'd get points and put that toward, you know, future stays, that kind of stuff?
So the state outsources theirs to a company, and then they give us a list of preferred housing. So I tried to do that at one point, but we were paying, if they're not in that group, we're paying a lot more.
Sure.
So we stayed inside that group.
And when you say the state, that's MHSAA court?
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and comments, so next regular meeting.
Good catch.
I missed it. Next we have the request to approve the contracting with TMP Architecture for pre-bond services. TMP Architecture has submitted a proposal to the pre-bond services to regard to a potential bond issue in 2025 or 2026. The scope of the pre-bond services include, but are not limited to, facility assessment, program assessment, community engagement and discovery and exploration, architectural engineering and interior design services. The pre-bond professional fees are as follows. Facility condition, $9,000. Program assessment, $6,000. Pre-bond services, $11,000. The full proposal is included in the report of bond perusal of roll call vote is recommended. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the contracting with TMP for pre-bond fees at a cost of $26,000. Is there a motion?
Order?
Any discussion? Are these typical fees?
Yes. And the bond taxes.
Is that what we paid?
The, no, the previous architect firm, the cost was higher because you had gone through two cycles. And they were working on, yeah, through those two cycles, that number got bigger.
All right. Roll call vote.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean is absent, member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, the announcements and comments. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held Monday, March 17 at 6 o'clock in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located 401 South River Drive in Coldwater, Michigan.